All right, welcome. We're here for the September 29th, 2025, the State of Hills School Board Meeting. And I appreciate everyone being here today. We've got a big group, a lot of people recognized, and looking forward to that. Before we begin, we're going to go with the minutes and approve the agenda. So do I hear a motion to recommend to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move on to, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board members, we've got two rec- decisions today. I want to share with you, first of all, I want you to see Mike Shaw. Representative Mike Shaw, District?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Right here.
Forty-seven, yeah, Vestavia High alone. Who's been in the House for several years now and a great supporter of our schools. I know you know Mike well. Also a fantastic musician, just on the side. Music's heavy stuff. Glad to have Mike with us. He's got a special presentation. So before he does that, I want to pay Glenn Hart to come up and join us.
Just a fun kind of event.
Yeah.
Come on, Glenn.
All right. Well, I'll be quick because we've got this youthful energy in the room. You know, when we keep that model up there and so on. But first of all, thank y'all for what you do. Thank you to the board. I know personally, my wife serves on school board, so I know there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of work put into this and not a lot of rewards. Thank you for what you do for the community. Schools are a central part of my district and a central part of the community. And an important part of that. So, but we have these grants we can give out. We can allocate them to lots of different things. But it's really cool because we get to direct them to things that are important to our district, and I can't think better things to direct them to than Vestavia Hills City Schools. This is $42,000 to go to Fine Arts. And again, I appreciate you. Um. To Fine Arts at Vestavia Hills, which was a long, long time ago, a very, very long time ago. But so it's always, it's always great to come back and support things that are important and meaningful in our community. So thank y'all for the work you do and.
Thank you.
For this. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, Mike, I really appreciate it. And this is just something he's been doing annually. We've got a different project to take on this year. The arts department is a robust department in our schools. I mean, I think about two-thirds of our kids at some point will go do an arts program in secondary grades. You see a lot of that happen on the stage and on the field. And so it's a big part. It takes a lot to run it, too. So this is.
One additional note, old timers remember the song Birdland.
It's already in the works.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he's, no, Dr. Horner, it's not Dr. Horner.
It is Dr. Horner, yeah.
He put it in there, put it back in the stands, and I got to go video it. I don't know if y'all, y'all might even, you remember Birdland from back in the day. You remember it as part of the, the, uh.
You would know it if you heard it.
I might be, I might be the oldest graduate of the rest at this point, but it was.
Hotter pillows.
Yeah, yeah. They, um, they put the, uh, it's a song these, the band used to do as part of the pep rallies, as part of the band. And I, I looked and they weren't, they weren't doing it anymore. So I called Dr. Horner and said, hey, do you do this? If I give you a grant, will you do it? Hey, I'll do it even without a grant. I said, well, don't tell me that. Because we'll, we'll go ahead and get it. So there's more. I'm putting in for a grant this week. I'm true to my words that he, he put it back in the stands. So if you hear a new song, it's, it's, that goes back to like 1983, I think, I think.
Early in its times.
Yeah, so that's what it was. So happy to, to support everything. I know he puts a lot of work into it, especially tradition. I know Vestavia Hills is a big on tradition, and that's a, that's a cool and great basis. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Thanks for doing this. Thank you. Done your work for that.
Thank you.
I told her to go to one of the meetings, she didn't have to prepare. She was a little bit surprised. That's great. All right, Laura Casey. Come on up, Laura. Laura is our athletic director and has been serving in that role for just a few months, but she was also a assistant principal at Vestavia Hills High School for a time. That's this fantastic science teacher, ball coach over the years, and most importantly, Vestavia alone. And recently, the Orlean Beeson School of Education at Sanford University recognized her as a learning-for-life honoree. And they started this program about 10 years ago, 2015. We've had a few over the years that have received this, but Sanford University family loves Laura Casey because she is an authentic leader and loves to really just pour into kids in a lot of different ways. She has an absolutely incredible vision, as you know, for athletics moving forward. So this is a big deal. This is a prestigious honor, and so I just wanted to share that with everybody in the room so they knew about it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, we have 24 guests today. I'm thinking maybe if we don't, we'll say 24 or something in absentia. But I want to recognize some really important folks today that are National Merit semifinalists. I'd like Blair to come up and help me out with that. So if you're a National Merit semifinalist this year, come on up to the front. Let's get y'all out of there. All right. Doctor Navin, would you share good news about this prestigious group of youngsters?
Well, they're brilliant for starters, but even more importantly, they're really, really amazing people. As I'm looking at them, and we spent some time together one morning not too long ago, as I'm looking at them, they, these are students who are leaders in our school in a variety of ways, academically and otherwise as well. They're good people with strong character, and we're just so proud of them. As I shared with them, this is a milestone, but it is not the stone. This is another point on their path. One of our core values is the pursuit of excellence, and so that's not just outcomes, but that's processes. And they are a living testament of what many, many, many moments can build to be. So to be at this honor is the top 1% of students who have scored on the PSAT assessment their previous year, and they just knocked it out of park. We're really proud of them.
Yeah, so the 24 this year is the highest we've had since 2006. That was Jay graduate major. 2006, we have had three plus or 20 National Merit semifinalists group just this decade. So certainly I want to brag even more about this group. It's the highest number of National Merit semifinalists of any high school in the state of Alabama, and that would be three out of the last four years. So you guys just keep ramping it up and doing great work. And it goes to a whole lot of work to get them to this point. So I'd like for you to introduce yourself, and you're seniors this year. And if you wanted to share where you're thinking about school, and if you're keeping that secret, that's okay. But I'd be interested in what you're thinking about as a major and where you're heading to school, if you've got that figured out yet. Okay, so we're going to start with you.
Hey, everybody. My name is Kapu, I'm a speaker, and I'm thinking about majoring in neuroscience at UAB.
Hey, everyone. My name is Adi Shilvan. I want to be an aerospace engineer at Georgia Tech.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jeffrey Zal. I'll be the actual engineer at Georgia Tech.
Hi, everyone. I'm Eric Wang, and I want to study statistics and math at wherever place will accept me.
Kind of fair, and you should be okay.
My name is Janine Bay, and I want to study mechanical engineering at Georgia Tech. At Lick and Dream.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tina Lu, and I actually have no idea what I want to study, but I'll figure it out.
My name is Aiden Yothar, and I'd like to study international relations at George Washington University or Embry.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Cutney, and I'm hoping to study chemistry and dance.
Hi, I'm Sarah McKelvey, and my dream school is Caltech. I don't know about that. And I would like to study planetary science and astronomy.
My name is Judy Ammone, and I hope to study chemical engineering at University of.
My name is Tina, and I hope to study applied math.
My name is Jack Huganon, and I want to study economics.
My name is Lance Wilkerson. I plan to go to Alabama, probably get into law school.
My name is Cooper Pryor. I don't know what I want to study, but I'm going to Auburn.
My name's Nihon Androby, and I plan to study neuroscience at UAB.
My name's John Lee Wimberly, and I want to study either mechanical engineering or music at Vanderbilt.
Hey, I'm Vivian Chi, and I'm hoping to study biochemistry pre-med at Vanderbilt or University of Michigan.
Hi, I'm Alicia, and I want to study biomedical sciences at somewhere.
Hi, I'm Marion Malik, and I want to study cancer biology at UAB.
Hi, I'm Round C, and I also want to do neuroscience.
Hi, I'm Von Villaman, and I want to study computer science at UT Austin.
I'm Hannah McMurray, and I want to study chemical engineering.
Whit, tell them what we've given them today.
This is a challenge coin that we put together several years ago for high-achieving students and staff in our school system as a mark of recognition of your achievement at this moment. Just a milestone for us to congratulate you on your achievement and hope that you remember us as you go from here in a couple of years and do some pretty amazing things. Congratulations.
Board members, I think behind this here, any comments you want to, I want to share this group. Obviously, the medals are the least we can do, but the pride that I know your parents have, but just we here as a community have, and what each and every one of you have done. Obviously, thank your parents because they, uh, they did the blood, sweat, and tears just like y'all did, right? And, uh, but, um, just knowing how my kids grew up, I know if we were to go and pass y'all's bedrooms at 2:00 in the morning, the lights would still be on a lot of times because y'all, y'all are in the books. I was always asleep. Don't worry about it. But you guys, y'all, uh, you know, it's truly a testament to your hard work and your dedication, and just so look forward to your continued success and, um, just, just best of luck to you.
Moms, dads, we got a queue here. Anybody want to brag for a minute? You should be proud. We should proud of the board, so congratulations. You wasn't mistaken. We've got an exciting agenda. All right. Thank you, everybody. Lou Malone to the financial statement board.
Good afternoon, board members. I've provided the financial statements and check register for the period ending August 30th, 2025 for your review. As of August 31st, we have collected 102.4% of our budgeted adult loan tax revenues compared to 111.6% at this time last year. In August, we earned $103,088 in interest income from our investment and treasury sweep account. Our total general fund expenditures and transfers out through August 31 were 99% of the budget compared to 96.2% at this point last year. Ideally, by the 11th month of the fiscal year, we would expect to be at about 91.7% of the budget. The higher percentage this year primarily due to scheduled annual payments that we've already made, contract services for exit that exceeded budget amounts, and unbudgeted maintenance items. All bank accounts have been reconciled as of August 31st, 2025, and the monthly financials have been submitted to the Alabama Department of Education. Monthly financial statements and check registers are also available for public viewing on our district's website.
Board members, I recommend approval of the financial statement for August 2025.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the financial statement for August 2025. Bank accounts have been reconciled through August 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of consent items related to disposal of property in the in-state, overnight, out-of-state, and out-of-state, overnight field trips.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent item regarding field trips. Do, are you hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Under business, our first item is revision to policy 6.11, and I recommend approval to that policy related to admissions and attendance.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for the revision to board policy 6.1.1, the admissions and attendance. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, this policy is specific to first grade admission and making sure there are not restrictions on that that are out of bounds. And so we're just updating our policy to, to the Alabama code language, and I make sure it's consistent that kids that meet certain age criteria are able to enroll. And in some cases, if they don't meet eligibility in terms of academic readiness, then we have the interventions in place as they enroll. So that's what this is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, I recommend the board approve the policy related to vape awareness, education, and prevention.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the policy 6.30, the vape awareness, education, and prevention. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Representative, glad you're here tonight. We're doing things related to legislative battle. This is one of those.
I'll give you a favorable report.
Legislature in the 2025 session passed a bill the governor signed into law regarding this very policy that's prescribed that the board have a policy related to prevention, education, and awareness. And so what the policy stipulates is that there will be education when a student has a vape disposition. There will be a graduated set of circumstances that we are developing based on your approval of this policy tonight. So that's what the language of it lays out to be, and it's just to comply with the legislation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, I recommend the board approve revision of policy 4.1, excuse me, policy 6.1. Which policy is it? 4.2.4, and that is tobacco nicotine.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation as replaced the revision to policy 4.2.4 related to tobacco nicotine. Do I hear a motion?
Commit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, this is just making the language in that policy consistent with the vape in policy language, so we want to make sure our policies don't misalign. And that, so this was just one that the state also made a recommendation, state, the department made a recommendation that we make consistent.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item D, recommendations to approve bid for Williford Orman Construction LLC for the retrofit of theater rigging system at Vestavia Hills High School in the amount of $971,897.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the bid for the high school theater rigging system. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We started work on this project about a year ago. Dr. Erendall inherited this one, and the project scope grew a significant amount, actually, but not because of him, but just because of the concerns of safety around this equipment. What we're doing is upgrading the theater rigging system inside existing facility. It's something that is definitely necessary to do for us. It is going to be paid through the supplemental dollars we get from the state, the advancement in technology dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, I recommend the board approve a contract with Williford Orman Construction LLC for improvements to the theater rigging system at Vestavia Hills High School.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract for the Vestavia Hills Theater Rigging System with Williford Orman Construction. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, I recommend the board approve a owner-architect agreement with Latham and Associates for bathroom improvements at Vestavia Hills Elementary East and Vestavia Hills High School softball stadium.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the owner-architect agreement with Latham and Associates for the bathroom improvements at Vestavia Hills Elementary East and Vestavia Hills High School softball stadium. Do I hear a motion?
Commit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Board members, we're starting what will be a very long process, I think, in getting the bathroom renovations. Our architect tells us, generally speaking, it's about $500 a square foot to renovate a bathroom. So we've got $200,000 budgeted, and we think that might take care of one boys and one girls' bathroom in these. So we've got a long way to go, but we're at least starting the process. The high school softball stadium does have some areas we want to, I think, increase the number. Laura, you want to speak to that maybe?
Yeah, we'll be putting, hopefully, two showers in the softball facility or in where there are existing bathrooms. So no bathrooms are being taken out, but it's at each other's facilities.
Yeah, and there's some other, just type of bad things that we're working on at that stadium as well, we could get there.
Did you have something on this? I was, we'll say, yeah, we can. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, I recommend the board approve the 2025-26 supplement schedule.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2025-26 supplemental schedule. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item A, I recommend the board approve the amendment with Snyder Electric for a project at Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Ridge.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the amendment with Snyder Electric for the project at Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Ridge. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We've had a series of amendments with Snyder since we started working in 2020 on our energy savings work. And to date, Todd and Kyle are here with us, they from Snyder, shared with me that we have spent about $15 million plus dollars, plus an additional amount of a little bit over a million in form of rebate for the high school lights since this started in 2020. And all of that money has been from state supplemental dollars. So thank you for the advancement technology dollars, bond issues. That's how we've gotten these projects done. I do want to put in context while we're talking about this is that we will do this project, Dolly Ridge, and that will be a little less than half of what we have scheduled to do there. We're hopeful to bring you a contract to consider later this year for West to do some portion of work there for heating and air as well. That will be a little less than half of their work. I think we still have conservatively about $20 million that we know needs to be done. We're just heating and air conditioning, and that's before we get into the next phases of work that Snyder's really already telling me we need to be on. So we've got a long way to go here. We're fortunate to have the fund source we have from the state to get there. But this amendment is specific to Dolly Ridge, which will be, I believe it will be the A Building, which is where our kindergarten and third grade live and the main structure of campus that should come in. And what we'll be doing, heating and air conditioning replacements and roofing. Am I correct on that?
And a portion of the middle section of the office.
Right, where the main business office.
After it back there.
Yeah, okay. So good time to ask questions technically if you got them. Their ear tone is here, so all things mechanical related.
Not mine either. Appreciate all the work you're doing and hearing us, listening to us, as to what we need and have small buildings. And as you can see and as you know, and we're committed to getting things updated, renovated, and up to snuff. So anyway, this is beginning, and y'all have been doing the work, but just a continuation of the beginning stages of work. It's going to be a while, but we're committed to getting it done step by step, and we appreciate all you're doing to help us get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item I, recommendations to approve the social studies textbook committee.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the social studies textbook committee. Do I hear a motion?
Submit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, the statute requires that a textbook committee consists of school employees and parents, and so this is a mixture of that. You see that on any textbook committee. And this happens after the state approves a course of study. So the state's approved the social studies course of study, and now we select a textbook. Textbooks do have to be approved by the state before we advance them further. I don't know if it's here or not, but, uh, so the process will start this year, and we bring this to you. This is a policy matter, so once textbooks are selected, materials are selected, we'll bring this to you back for recommendations.
All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Item J, I recommend approval of a license agreement with Brittany Jones Consulting, Incorporated.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve a license agreement with Brittany Jones Consulting, Eek. All in favor? Excuse me. Do I hear a motion?
Commit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Whit, anything you want to add on this one?
This is our 21st licensing agreement. I'll have number 22 for you, and hopefully number 23 next one.
Thank you for all the work on that, Whit. All in favor of the license agreement?
Aye.
Item K, recommendations to approve a contract with Emily Earwood for management of One Legacy.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve the contract with Emily Earwood for management of One Legacy. Do I hear a motion?
Commit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Board members, Emily is a former high school student, Vestavia Hills High School grad, of course. She taught at high school in math, and now she's going to be doing this work. This comes on the heels of Ally Filtcher's resignation for One Legacy, which is a good thing because she's now going to be serving as city councilperson in a couple of months, less than, well, less than that. But so she's off her resignation, and Emily's going to step in and do this. And as you know, One Legacy is our arm to really build a larger basis of communication, support, awareness of our alumni, and then at some point, hopefully, we're able to leverage that into tangible opportunities to benefit the school system. So Ally, anything you want to add on this part?
I was just going to say thank you all so much for your support in my year of One Legacy. I think it's going to be so great for our community, and Emily and I worked together at Hoover High School as teachers, and then we're together on different places around the city, and I think she's going to be wonderful. Keep it going.
Thanks, Hal.
Well, I'm excited what you've done, just getting this off the ground, and then the continuation with you being on the city council now, and then to see this, you know, shepherd her through the beginning stages and help her to take the baton and run with it. Just that's, it's a huge benefit we have, so looking forward to it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board members, we are nominating, real quick, point of order. Okay. Oh, okay. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you. Let's get our thoughts. Okay, just making sure. Board members, do I have a, I'm going to open the floor for a nomination for a delegate for the AASB Assembly.
I'd like to nominate Shelley Gentle.
Okay.
Surprise.
Yes. Shelley is a come-on board, is a valued board member, and being nominated for the delegate for the AASB Assembly is a high honor that we value here at the Vestavia School Board. So do I hear a, I heard a motion from Kyle. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Under personnel, recommendations to approve items, personnel items as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Commit.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is, this concludes our agenda for the board meeting here this afternoon. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, uh, is, this concludes our agenda for the board meeting here this afternoon. Is there anyone here for public comment? With that being said, uh, just real quick before we adjourn, um, just as far as the school year, as it's going so far, I could not be, uh, more proud and just, uh, just, uh, what we're hearing from the community and stakeholders. Uh, it's really started off a good year, and, uh, as fall season starts, it's my favorite time of year and, um, you know, just get out. Go to musicals, go to volleyball games, go to football games. We got basketball starting, but just all of our things. The band is so good at the games and just, uh, get out, support our school system, support our schools. And, um, anyway, go Rebels. What's that? And it's homecoming week. See, I'm getting nostalgia. All of my mics here and just One Legacy. Yeah, it's been promoted. So anyway, it's, it's, it's a proud community, obviously, but, uh, just really, uh, proud to be a part of it. Go Rebels. Meeting adjourned.